Here.
Thanks.
Having the motion picture cameras on now, for the record, we have gone through items one, two, three, and four, and we are now at item five. So we, all of them were approved unanimously. So having said that, number five, public comments and communication concerning items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the public that wants to say something regarding our agenda or have it added to the agenda? Thank you very much then. Not seen any. There is no old business, so we will go to new business. And our first new business would be the public hearing for site plan review and special land use for 1965 West Main. And having said that, if we could have the representative from the 1965 West Main Met's Cafe, please come aboard. Please give us your name, address, all of that information. And if you would, in like, you know, four or five minutes, just kind of explain generally what you want to do.
Sure.
Okay?
My name is Andrea Hendrick, 1514 Muyra Bernabein. I am representing Met's Cafe today. As you can see from the site plan, we would like to take an existing building and turn that into a marijuana facility. This will be for provisioning. There will be no onsite consumption. There will be no onsite processing or growing. I think that Mr. Moore has done a good job, kind of just explaining in his staff report, the plan that we are putting forth. A couple of things that I'd like to address regarding this, all of the parking is going to be sufficient. The existing site is for the most part consistent with the zoning ordinance. I do want to say that I miscalculated the landscaping requirements. So if you saw that we propose a forest in the front yard, that's my doing, and it probably is onerous and unnecessary. So if the planning commission would be amenable to kind of taking that down and letting us work with staff administratively to just follow the standards of the zoning ordinance, I think we'd wait for them to sign. Additionally, regarding landscaping, we're proposing some trees against the back, the north side of the building, or the north side of the property. I would also like you to kind of consider if that's appropriate, given the grading. Again, I thought the landscaping standards are that we put above a tree, some vegetation there. We're amenable to doing that, but it may be nice to talk to a landscape designer and make sure that that's actually, with the grading of the land, that that's actually necessary, that the trees can actually thrive there. I'm more than willing to talk over the operation of the facility. This will be, as you said, recreational. We also anticipate that there may be a large influx of people. We're unsure. It may not happen at all. But in anticipation for what happened in Ann Arbor when the first recreational store opened, this will be the first in Kent County. We have worked with all of the neighbors. I'm not sure, did you end up handing out the community engagement?
We did get those just as the meeting, just before the meeting started. So we haven't really had a chance to look at it.
Okay. And I can kind of summarize, we've been working with the neighbors. We did notice, prior to the actual notice that was required by the city, so we noticed the neighbors in early December. We held a public, or a community meeting onsite where we had some of the neighbors come, give their feedback as far as their concerns. The only concern that the neighbors did have is potentially, a neighbor to the north in one of the condos directly behind us said, "I'm worried about the influx of people and cars coming through there." So we worked out a parking, if you'll note in that packet, we actually have a LOI with the owner of the property where the tractor supply company is located. And we have worked out at least a temporary parking agreement for the first month, and we'll work with staff to be able to direct people. It seems that the parking lot is getting full. We'll direct people over to the lot over in the tractor supply, and then safely make sure that people can get over there and that it's not negatively affecting the traffic flows for the initial population that may be coming. There were some comments about delivery. There was a couple deficiencies in the application that I'll just address, and then if you want to speak more to that. Deliveries will come in the north side of the building. If you look on the, there's a parking lot on the north side of the 4,000 square foot building where we're going to have the facility. We would propose that our delivery area would be the last, the southeast parking space abutting the north of the building. And that would be, we will just add something saying that that's going to be the parking, the loading. We will, you know, schedule all of our deliveries, and that will probably not be during busy business hours. But we will add that, if the planning commission is amenable to that, we'd like to just note now in the minutes that that will be the loading area. Another issue that we have talked with a lot of people about is that the, we do not have in our current plans intention to add filtration and some of the other elements within the HVAC system, because this is a provisioning center. And typically with a provisioning center, there's not, it's not, we're not growing, we're not processing. There's no associated odor. We are amenable to putting that back into the plan and doing that when the commission feels that that's appropriate. But just from our experience in the, in the industry, there's not an associated smell with provisioning centers. Product comes in, it's sealed. It will be displayed in cases, it's sealed. There's no massive amount of odor that comes off of a product just sitting on a shelf. But again, we are amenable to making our site compliant with the standards of the zoning ordinance. I think we also, there was some question about locks on the trash can, and our current site plan doesn't actually indicate, but I was onsite on the way here, and I took a couple of pictures, and there actually already is a lock. The enclosure of the dumpster actually already has doors that close on the north side, and there's a lock there. So that is already part of the existing site. Apart from that, I'm willing to take any questions that you may have regarding the operation or the site plan.
Andrea, we will certainly have questions, and we'll get back to you as we go through the thing. And we'll break it into chunks, so that it'll be easier to ask the questions. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Before she goes down.
No, steps away.
Reading everything that I read. Nowhere did I see hours of operation.
They will be 10 to 7 in compliance with the state regulations. When was that? Is it 10 to 9? It's in there. It is in there.
I believe it was 9 to 9.
9 to 9?
Yeah.
Let's go with 9 to 9.
I didn't see it, so I'm.
Okay.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
Six days a week?
Seven.
Seven. Any other questions, commissioners? And I'm sure we'll have questions as we go through the proposal. Okay. Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate it. As a, as a public hearing, just for the general public, we will have questions from the general public as we go through this hearing. We'll probably stop a couple of different times and ask those. I will, I will ask if you do have remarks to make or things of that nature. You keep them relatively short, to the point, that sort of thing. It's a fairly lengthy proposal that we're looking at tonight, so we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have a say if they have any questions or concerns. But on the other hand, we want to try to move the proceedings along at a, at a good clip. So, but rest assured, everybody will have a chance to have their say if they want to say anything. So just to make that clear. Having said that, I'm going to ask Andy Moore from Williams &amp; Works to start the process by going through the memorandum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everyone understands clearly that we're talking about, this is the Family Video property on the north side of Main Street. This is on the west side of town. So I guess just to sort of set this up a little bit, as we worked through drafting the regulations for adult marijuana establishments over the last almost year or so, we had presented a series of maps that had the various thousand-foot buffers from schools and daycares and things like that. So this is a property that is ineligible area. The property is zone C3. It's not within 1,000 feet of any of those locations. It's not within 1,000 feet of a school, or a daycare, or the C3. It's a provision there that we had to run those lines. So this is a property that within the city qualifies for a adult use marijuana establishment. As Andrea mentioned, this is going to be strictly of provisioning or retailer type. There's not processing. There's not growing. It's strictly a storefront, for lack of a better term. So these are permitted in that district with special land use approval. We noted, and as Andrea mentioned, there are just a couple, like three things on the site plan that weren't addressed. None of them are items of great concern to us, because this is an existing site, so there's existing parking, existing stormwater, there's an existing building on the site. So this is a little different from how we review something where it's a brand-new building, around the, like, limited burger king, or the credit union or something, where it's a brand-new building. So some of these, so we're dealing with a lot of things that aren't as dangerous. So the lighting plan, they provided, for example, cut sheets on what the lighting fixtures would look like, but they didn't indicate what they were on the building. And the ones that were shown, they looked like they were fully cut-off fixtures. So again, that's, to me, that's a fairly minor detail at this point. The loading area Andrea addressed, and adjacent zoning, this is a fairly picky detail, but on the site plan, I believe on the south side of Main Street, it indicated that zoning was C3. It's actually MHP, the Manufacturing Home Park. There's on the south side of Main Street. That doesn't disqualify the property or change anything in any way. It's just more for accuracy's sake. There is also a bunch of additional material that is required when we're looking at marijuana establishments. And there were a few items that were not received with regard to the security plan, which we believe to be relatively minor. And then again, the procedures for how the product gets received in the store and things like that weren't addressed. Again, Andrea mentioned where the loading area would be, so that helps clear that up a little bit. Question yet, or should I proceed with site plan review comments?
Commissioners, we all set?
Okay. So landscaping. What the ordinance requires, for the entire site, it requires three trees and 10 shrubs on the site. They proposed more than that, five trees and 20 shrubs. We noted on the site plan, it looks like some of those were in a non-planting way, which I'm not sure what they're going to say, but I guess they would not want those there. So one of the, one condition that you could attach to an approval, if you were inclined to approve it, would be to modify the landscaping plan so that, at a minimum, they're not in the right of way. If you want to maintain the five trees and the 20 shrubs they proposed, that's fine. I noticed Andrea mentioned that they could dial that back a little bit, if that's acceptable to you. You could also suggest that you just work with staff, and we'll make sure that it meets the standards of the ordinance, and that's something that we will just look at after the fact. Lighting, we talked about.
Andy, just before that, the rear, the north side, with the fences as being there, and as Andrea stated, it's not necessary for the trees to be there because of the way it slopes.
Mm-hmm.
I, my opinion is, I'd still like to see some shrubbery, trees, something back there.
Trees anyway, just.
I'd like to see something with a little bit more height than just to block it just a little bit further. So I'm not opposed to whatever the landscaper, the actual people say.
Put something back.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Preferably trees, and I'm not real opposed to the number I want that one, but enough to do the job.
Or those, those pines that fill in real thick.
Yeah.
Because in all honesty, you're going to have a ton of traffic, and you're going to be in the dark. We would just seem to keep the headlights up from residential, just avoid issues, problems.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a landscape designer on staff, so I can, I can check with her to make sure that those pines are going to be viable long-term. So it's going to be something that will die in two years.
Right.
So we will certainly check on that.
Okay. And I think same in the front there. I'm not opposed to adding extra trees, but I don't think that they're necessary to do that either.
No, because you were talking landscaping in front of the building, correct?
Yeah.
There's nothing there right now, is there?
One tree.
One tree.
Yeah. I personally don't think that we need landscaping up there, but.
I'm, I'm fine with that, is, you know, if they want to add some, it's always nice, but, you know, it's an amenity, as far as I'm concerned.
So you're agreeable to them reducing the amount of landscaping, but you want them to keep the four or five trees they have in the rear set?
Yeah, or something similar to that.
Just use something to make like a secondary screening back there.
Gain, gain some height primarily. Lightening, set pine trees or something that would give some year-round depth to it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did I interrupt you? I think we're.
We're good.
Okay, lighting. So the applicant provided cut sheets that just show, you know, downward-facing lighting. It appeared on the site plan that the light poles are all existing. Is that correct?
Okay.
So because they're existing, I wouldn't recommend any changes, however, they are taller than what the ordinance presently permits. Those are 26-foot tall poles. The ordinance right now limits them to 20. So because they're already there, you know, we treat them as legally non-informing, but you know, if someone drives a car and they want to knock it over, the one that goes up to your place is going to have to be a bit shorter. Again, there are exterior wall-mounted lights, and those are going to need to be fully cut-off if they're new lights. So it looks like on the wall packs that were submitted, the lights sort of shine outward, not just down. So that's one change that we request on the lighting. For parking, so they meet the requirement for the ordinance in terms of the number of spaces that are required. The ordinance requires one space for 200 square feet of retail store floor area, which requires 21 spaces. You know, they're providing 31 based on the, on what's there now. So the Family Video had 31. They're also going to have 31. That exceeds the standards of the ordinance. I appreciate that they are talking about the fact that in the near term, it's certainly possible that it will be busy for the first few weeks or months. And that's fine. I'm glad that they have an agreement with the neighbor. One potential, again, condition down the line, if you're inclined to approve this at some point, would be to, you know, potentially reserve the right to have them make that permanent. So if, if that demand does not go down, which I expected it would, but if for some reason they're consistently exceeding the 31 spaces that are on the site, they always need 40 or 45, then we will look for them to make a more permanent arrangement with parking moving forward, hoping that their neighbors would be agreeable with that as well.
Commissioners, does that make sense?
Yeah.
To include it as a condition that 30, 60 days out, we take, or Andy takes a look at it, and, does that make sense?
Okay. I would expect that as the market for this begins to saturate a little bit more with additional facilities and other Kent County communities, that this will probably level off at a reasonable number within the first, you know, several months. But because they're first, I can certainly see there being a lot more traffic than maybe.
That's a good question. Andrea, how long is your current parking situation? What have you scheduled it for?
Do you want me to come up or can I just?
Yes, please come up. We have a mic. We're recording it, so it's easier.
Sure. So currently, we have a month-to-month. We've signed one month with the intention that if the traffic continues, that we will lengthen that. I haven't honestly had a conversation with the owner if they would be amenable to something permanent.
Right.
The lot currently is underutilized. It's a huge parking lot. I don't know, I wouldn't assume they have a problem with that, but I can't speak for that.
Right. Right. Okay. I think we need to link that up to the zoning administrator to just kind of go by the traffic counts and stuff like that, correct? Okay. Thank you, Andrea.
This might be a lot of same lines, maybe different. Is there an occupancy limit to that building, square footage-wise? There would be, yes. I'm not sure exactly what that number is, but there certainly would be a max of people that would be allowed in there all the time, just like any other.
Interesting. Yeah, okay. That's a good question too, Andrea. Do you guys have, with your existing building in Rogers, Rogers City, is it?
Yep.
Do you have such a situation there?
We don't. We're kind of in the middle of nowhere. It's between upper and mid-point. So I think our waiting room fits 10, 12 people. But I think the whole building is only about 2,000 square feet.
Right.
So quite a bit smaller.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Signage?
Yep.
So signage typically, I mean, there's an existing signage there. It's my understanding that they will reface that obviously, and, you know, we will deal with that as signage comes in under a separate permit. We have the same sort of limitations on square footage and illumination and all that stuff in high degree of commitment play for them as it would for anybody else. So we'll take a more detailed look at signage, make sure that it's compliant if and when that application comes in. On page four now, top of my report of verification. So we require the applicant to submit a statement confirming that they're the proposed operator of the use, which they have submitted. Under consent, it requires that the applicant submit a statement of consent from their property owner acknowledging the use of the property, and acknowledging to, or agreeing to hold harmless and indemnify the city and so forth from any claims, liabilities, demands arising out of or in connection to the operation of the establishment, and permitting the city to inspect it during normal business hours. And they have completed all of that information. Also included was the copy of the state facility license to operate a provisional center. And also included were documents confirming their qualification status, and a letter of recommendation, or letters, there are several actually submitted from other community members in Rogers City, just attesting to the applicant's presumed character. Also, a completed application for a city of low provisional license was also submitted. So that process in the city, the city requires kind of a two-step process. So there's this initial provisional license here that gets submitted initially to the city, and to the state for that matter, then they come to the planning commission. So if the planning commission were to approve this prior to operating, they would have to complete the city's license for adult use marijuana establishments, along with the state's, and then submit all of that paperwork before they were permitted to operate. So.
That is a condition that we would put.
Correct. Yep, absolutely. And so that kind of covers the main application and site plan items there as far as completeness of an application. It generally seems very complete, other than a handful of items that frankly are not anything that would prevent us from continuing with review.
We'll take a brief second here. Commissioners, any, any questions at this point, or everybody on board? Okay. I'm going to open it up to general questions of the general public, if anybody's interested at this point. Otherwise, what we'll do is we will go through our site plan review standards. And there's about six standards here that we go through, and then we'll take another break at that point, too. These standards are, it'll give you a little bit better, a fuller background with what, what is happening here in this process. So, and again, I'll, I'll make sure that if you do want to speak, you'll have your opportunity. But I would suggest that we wait till after we go through the standards. But I will offer, if somebody is red hot to go speak right now. If not, we'll start. Okay. Andy?
Go with the site plan review standards.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the following site plan review standards, these are listed in section 18.06 of the zoning ordinance. These standards, to you, planning commissioners, we'd be very familiar, because we do this pretty much every month for every site plan that comes in the door. So I'm just going to summarize the standard along with our comments, and then, Mr. Chairman, do you just want to kind of vote on each one as we go?
Yeah, I think so. Let's accept the standards, because there are six of them.
Yeah. We have a lot of that to go through tonight, so.
Yeah. Let's, let's do it that way, and then we don't get confused.
Okay. So the first standard, item A, indicates or requires that the use is proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, and that they will take into account topography, size of the property, use of non-adjointing property, and a relationship and size of buildings to the site, et cetera. The, so there are a handful of things. This would obviously be a license as a marijuana retailer. These are permitted in that district as a special land use. They are only proposing to sell products dating that no growing cultivation consumption will occur on the site. You know, we feel that that would take into account those neighboring properties would minimize some of the concerns that were expressed during the ordinance development process with regard to odors and smells and all that kind of stuff. This is an existing building, so a lot of those standards, when it comes to how the building is situated and screened, and how parking is designed and all that, don't apply as much. But we don't, but as far as the site plan, site layout is concerned, we don't expect it to impede normally orderly development or improvement of the surrounding properties. There is a portion of the parking lot to the north that's adjacent to the R3 medium-density residential district. So it's important for those properties to be protected from glare, car headlights, and things like that. So if there were any new light poles in the distance, and some light there are, those would not be permitted to be higher than 20 feet. They'd have to be cut off and facing away from, from those properties. And, you know, it's not an issue, because they have submitted something, and there's an existing fence, but typically some screening would be required between the C3 district and that R3 property to the north. But because there's a fence and there's some, some proposed trees there, we felt like this, this standard was satisfied.
Commissioners, any questions on the site plan review standard A? Then I will propose all in favor of accepting that standard as acceptable. Please say aye.
Aye.
Both in aye.
Standard A is accepted.
Standard B indicates that safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided for progress and degress points within the site. Drive, streets, and other routes shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations. Generally speaking, they are not proposing to change the circulation pattern as much at all. There is an existing driveway on Main Street. There is existing parking that is, you know, generally speaking, logically laid out. We do note that they have proposed to add a sidewalk from Main Street to, that would connect the sidewalk that heads towards the building. That is something that the planning commission has required on quite a few site plans over the last couple of years. It's just something to kind of help, you know, facilitate pedestrian traffic, because there's not a lot of it in this area. But, you know, if someone is riding their bike or walking, then this gives them a, a, you know, barrier for you.
The other thing is they're using the other parking lot there. The parking lot would facilitate that. You would keep your mind on the parking lot itself, so.
Correct.
That would be the ideal situation.
Then as far as the loading and unloading areas, that was a question we had at the beginning of this. Andrea's answered that already, indicating where that's going to be. So, you know, the loading and unloading will, you know, have to occur via a secure transporter, which is another different type of license. So that's not something they're applying for here. So there will be another entity or organization that carries that license, that would be the ones delivering the product to the store.
Commissioners, the. Commissioners, the site plan review standard B, any discussion on it? Then I would propose all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Standard is accepted.
Item C discusses the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area, and they shall be provide, planning to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the city of Lowell. Similar to the previous standard, this primarily deals with site circulation and driveways and things like that. It's all existing, on the site presently, and we note the addition of the sidewalk there, so again, we feel like this standard is also satisfied.
Commissioners, in regard to the site plan review standard C, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Standard is accepted.
Item D requires that removal or alteration of significant natural features be restricted to those areas that are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. I feel like I'm repeating myself here, but this is a developed site, so there are very few natural features on the site presently, and frankly, their landscaping plan, both on the north and south side of the property, if anything, is probably a net improvement overall in terms of vegetation and things like that.
One of the things that is added here though, is the continuous, continuously maintained. So we need to add that into the conditions, that not only are they there, but they're maintained. Commissioners, and site plan review standard D, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it, please say aye.
Aye.
Standard D is accepted.
Standard D is satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements of the city of Lowell will be met. You know, certainly, this is the first of these applications that we have, that we've seen so far. They've submitted the required documentation to this point, that they would need to operate this business in terms of the state operating license, the special land use, which they're going through now, and also the city's license for an adult use marijuana establishment. And based on the completeness of the application and the other items submitted, I certainly, I guess my recommendation is they don't, you know, I have no reason to believe that they would not be following those standards. And you know, again, a condition of approval, if you were inclined to approve it at some point, would be continual compliance with all other applicable codes, licenses, permits, and so forth.
Commissioners, site plan review standard E, any discussion? Then I propose all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
E is accepted.
Item F is that the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and a comprehensive plan of the city of Lowell shall be maintained. So this is the site plan standard, obviously, in two thousand and seven, when this was adopted, adult use marijuana facilities weren't a thing that was talked about in the master plan, and that's fine, but generally speaking, the C three district is intended to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses that aren't necessarily in this downtown style of development. It's a more auto-oriented district. You know, the design of the building, the layout of the site, as it was before, you know, very clearly fits in with that pattern of development that we see. The master plan, future land use map shows that any highway business, future land use category, which aligns fairly well with your C three zoning district. Again, that is also described as retail office and service uses that are oriented towards automobile traffic, and this is a fairly auto-oriented site in a fairly auto-oriented area. We certainly, you know, agree with and appreciate the pedestrian connections here, but I think, you know, if we're looking at the general style of development in this area, it's fairly automobile friendly, and that's fine, and it fits in well with its surrounding environment.
Commissioners, site plan review standard F, any discussion? Then I propose acceptance of it. If you agree, please say aye.
Aye.
Item F is accepted. The next one would be a special land use review standards.
So these are what?
Five or six.
Six of those. Yes. So the standards that we just covered, the six are, those are standards that address site plan issues, so that's why we talked a lot about circulation and parking and layout and building design and landscaping and things like that. The next set of standards, there are six of those, these are also general standards that apply only to special land use. So in each zoning district, we have certain uses permitted by right, which we review only the site plan standards, then we have special land uses like this and many others that require both the site plan standards and these additional special land use standards. So these, as we walk through them, will apply to the land use and also to the site, but they're certainly intended to be thought of in the context of what that specific proposed use is on the site. So I'm just going to walk through these one at a time, Mr. Chairman, and we kind of do the same.
Same, same.
Okay. So these are in section seventeen point zero three of the zoning ordinance. Item A is that the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained, so has to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. Somewhat similar to the previous standard for site plan review, you know, the general character, the essential character of the area where it is, is a auto-oriented, commercial district. The building itself is not changing tremendously, other than, it sounds like there's some security film or something that goes on the windows itself, that's a requirement from the state, as I understand it, because they don't want you, product can't be visible through the window, is that?
Correct.
Okay. However, with the layout of the site as it relates to this specific use, again, I'm looking at it fairly minimal changes, so it's not going to look like a different property than it did before. This district is also intended to allow uses that may be ordinarily incompatible with the character of residential districts, and that would probably be true of an adult use marijuana establishment as well. Our analysis finds that we believe that it's in alignment with the character of the area of intended uses in C three and the general appearance along West Dean Street.
Commissioners, special land use review standard A, aye, discussion? All in favor of accepting standard A, please say aye.
Aye.
Standard is accepted.
Item B is that the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the city of Lowell master plan, which we discussed just a second ago. Again, the master plan showed this area any highway business, future land use category, which focuses primarily on auto-oriented retail office and service uses, so similar to that standard, we would also, you know, our review found that this was generally consistent with the master plan.
Commissioners, special land use review standard B, any discussion? All in favor of accepting B, please say aye.
Aye.
B is accepted.
Item C is that the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal of water and sewage facilities. This is an existing site, so we obviously know that many of these items, like streets and highways and sidewalks and things like that, are certainly available, and there's not going to be a significant change to that in this area. There is a shared driveway on the site here with the taco bell, there's already utilities and public infrastructure in place from the existing building, so we're not anticipating a significant number of changes there. You know, there will be some additional, you know, potential requirements for, when it comes to security and things like that, and the state authorizes and the city, you know, is allowed to charge a license fee that helps defray some of those additional public costs that would be set there. So that would be something that's primarily dealt with under the city's operating license, and obviously, they've applied for one of those. So with that additional assistance to help defray some of those costs, we don't see a notable need, because it's a retail store, again, there's not growing, and there's not things like that, so we don't have a huge electric consumption, we don't have a lot of water in or something, we can put even that on the site. Because it's only retail, we don't believe that any of those other public services or public facilities would be significantly impacted more than other land uses.
Commissioners, special land use review standard C, any discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting C, please say aye.
Aye.
C is accepted.
Item D is that the proposed special land use will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Most of the public services and facilities there will be similar to what was there before, obviously, except for some of the security and law enforcement issues that we talked about previously. We're not looking at additional hookups to water, additional hookups to sewer, or anything like that, so that largely will not be changed.
Commissioners, special land use review standard D, any discussion? All in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
D is accepted.
Item E, the proposed special land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operations that will be detrimental to any person's property with general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, clear or odors. So taking, so we just kind of wrote here that, you know, they have stated in their application that any onsite consumption of their products would not be tolerated by staff and security. The facility would solely focus on retail with no going or processing taking place on the site. Transfer would take place in secured containers, and would be by a secure transporter, so we don't feel that odor is going to be a significant concern with this site. Similarly, we did get a letter from the applicant addressing odors. This confirms a discussion with the plumbing and mechanical inspector for PCI, which states that the current air filtration in the building is sufficient for odors, because there will be no consumption, no processing, no growing, things like that. We think the odor on the site is going to be quite minimal. We also, outside of this, you know, potential for kind of a large rush right at the beginning, we feel that the traffic here will kind of settle down over time, so long-term, we don't have concerns over excessive production of traffic or noise or smoke or fumes or anything like that. This is only a retail store, and there's not going to be any change to the previous circulation of the site, so the overall traffic pattern and flow is going to be pretty much the same as it was before. There probably will be a little bit more in the near term, as some of the traffic will likely be a bit higher, but again, once that kind of settles down and they become more accustomed to operating in the city, more facilities open elsewhere, we do expect that that their traffic generation will kind of level off a little bit and become a little more normal and similar to other uses around the city, like some of the gas stations around the town.
Andy, and I'm asking a question here, does that include the parking lot? Use consumption in the parking lot?
You have to buy your own property.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is that you would not be able to purchase in the store and then, you know, wait up in the parking lot as soon as you walk out the door, I don't think that's something that's.
And like open the beer?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Just asking a question. How are you going to enforce that?
So yeah, we will have staff on hand handling that, but a lot of, the state law that goes along with this enforces this idea that yes, you can, marijuana is legal now, but that doesn't mean you can smoke it in your car, you can't smoke it in public, that's part of the state law. And also, along with the state law, there was a law adopted that you are looking at the purchaser, and you actually have to put in your information, well-known name, there's limits that you can buy every single day, so I can't walk in here and buy three ounces and then walk down the street and buy three more ounces, and have, there's a limit that the state allows for you actually to have. So if I come in and buy something and I'm consuming in my car, I have the name, address, and information of that person, and I will know if, I will know who it is that's smoking out there. We will be able to enforce that, and they won't be able to come back in the store and continue to purchase if they continue to act with that, so, and we can put it in the state registration.
Do you have issues in your other store with this happening?
We don't. We never have even tobacco on the property. I believe it's state law that they can't even smoke cigarettes on the property, out of state licenses.
I believe that's correct.
So it's pretty, it's pretty tough.
Yeah.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Having said that, then, special land use review standard E, all, any discussion, any further discussion?
I got one more. I know you said that the building department says they have applicable, the air filtration system is, but I would like to see a better air filter system in the building. It's something we've talked about a lot. Granted, you're game pigs.
Sure.
But I think we set a precedent now where, you know, air filtration is huge, we'll continue to do it to everybody that comes before us, but it is something I'd like to see that, you know, gets addressed. Whether it's a backup system, because if your furnace fails, or the AC unit fails, see what I'm saying? It would be a redundancy backup unit. I don't know how you get to that point, though.
Well, I guess that's my question, is if, would we require that of any other business? I don't know. And I understand your concern about the odor, because we have talked about that considerably.
And this is.
And we can put it in the conditions that if there is odor detected, we can have them put it in at that point.
I don't think, I don't think we could do it now, if they say that product is sealed until they prove us otherwise, seems to me to be, you know, as we have to go to McDonald's and all these other places.
It should be more self-contained in there.
Right. I would say until they show us otherwise.
Don't we have one of them little snippers we can check?
Actually, and in the industry too, I'm not sure if there is a, as Marty put it, a backup type unit, if there's some way of eliminating it, if they're, you know, temporarily at least, until it can be fully addressed. But I, we wouldn't ask that of anybody else. Why would we do it now?
It's a brand-new business.
I don't, I understand that.
I can see if, if you can smell it, then do something.
That's what I'm saying, anyhow. They say you can't, we got to believe them, just like we believe everybody else.
And I think we'll see that in the conditions that we put on there, that if odor does occur, then it has to be rectified.
Will be rectified immediately.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's the only fair way of doing that.